Good evening. My name is Jill Cohen, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Washtenaw County. Welcome to our online forum featuring candidates for the Ann Arbor City Council Ward Five. These candidates will be on the ballot for the primary election on Tuesday, August 2. The League of Women Voters works to expand voter rights and educate voters. We are a nonpartisan organization and neither endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. The League is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy, which the League does not endorse or oppose. The League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at this forum. We bring you tonight's forum because we believe that respectful sharing of views on community issues is vital to the functioning of American democracy. Our moderator this evening is Joan Sempire, who will explain the format and get us started.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. And now it's my honor to introduce the candidates running in the Democratic primary for Ann Arbor City Council Ward Five, Jen Cornell and Ali Ramlaoui. Thank you, candidates, for participating in the forum. The forum will follow this format. Each candidate will have an opening statement of up to one minute. Each will have a closing statement of up to 90 seconds. In between, I will ask questions which came from the community. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. At appropriate times, the timer will raise the sign on her screen indicating the time remaining, 30 seconds, and then stop. If you have used up your time, you'll be allowed to finish your sentence, and then your microphone will be muted, so the other candidate has an equal opportunity to participate. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order by last name. Each will have an opportunity to be the first or the last to answer the questions. We're now ready for your opening statement, Ms. Cornell.
Thank you so much for hosting us and for putting on this event. My name is Jen Cornell, and I am the city council candidate for Ward Five here in Ann Arbor. I am a mom. I believe that's an important voice to be represented on city council. I am raising two young children here in Ann Arbor, and I'd like to make sure the city is a vibrant place for them to call home for their entire lifetime. I have a strong environmental background. I'm on the board of the Ecology Center in Ann Arbor, and I am an A20 collaborator. I'm fiercely committed to anything that advances our carbon neutrality goals. I'm also pro-housing. I'm very proud of my attention to that in terms of understanding the issues and how we might be able to increase housing of all types, especially affordable and workforce housing in Ann Arbor. I'm excited to earn your vote.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ramlaoui, your turn for an opening statement.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Ali Ramlaoui, and I am running for reelection because I believe now, more than ever, an independent voice of reason is vital for sound council deliberations and decisions as our community moves forward together. I am the owner and operator of Jerusalem Garden, where I have worked since my family opened the business in 1987. I assumed full responsibility of the business in September of 1993 at the age of 18, when my father passed away unexpectedly. As a small downtown business owner and operator, I bring 30 years, lessons learned from real-life experiences to matters that come before city council. I've lived the ups and downs of running a business, and I credit success to determination, persistence, and hard work. I will bring these same qualities as a member of city council. Once again, I thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum.
Thank you very much. And now to the questions. I'll read the question once, and it won't be repeated unless you request it. We'll start with Mr. Ramlaoui for the first question. Would you please identify the top three concerns that residents of the Ann Arbor Ward Five have expressed to you? If you're elected, would you tell us how you would address one of those issues?
Well, thank you. Great question. I guess the first and foremost is the ongoing advancing of the gum and plume. Second is the infrastructure of the Fifth Ward, whether it's the sewer, roads, electrical grid. All of them are under increased stress, exasperated by climate change and development, and the ongoing crisis of affordability for our residents, whether they want to stay here or move here. There's an increasing amount of pressure and limited supply of housing. I guess, you know, with the infrastructure issues, I believe that we need to invest more money into our stormwater management. We need to change our policies that govern how we do that. We need to look into the possibility of municipal power. Our electrical grid in the Fifth Ward is failing our residents on a regular basis. We need to continue to replace our sewer and water lines. Many of the lines in the Fifth Ward are nearly 100 years old. So balancing our priorities, balancing our budget, making sure that we have the time and the money to do these things in order to maintain the quality of life that people here in Ann Arbor have accustomed to enjoy and deserve through their, you know, high property tax dollars. So I look forward to continuing to do what is possible to advance all those issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cornell.
This is my first time running for office and my first time being out on the doors, and I want to thank everyone who's taken time to actually talk with me and let me know what is important to you. The top three issues that I hear on the doors are around housing. Seniors wanting to age in place, who have paid off their homes or have significant equity in their homes but don't feel so they have an option to sell because there's no place else in the city for them to move. People who want their children, grown children, to raise their families here in Ann Arbor, but those children won't want to come back here and don't want to come back here because of the high cost of living. That, to me, indicates that we have a housing shortage. We need more workforce and affordable housing. I hear a lot about infrastructure, basic city services, not just from residents but from Main Street businesses. I'm a board member of the Main Street Area Association, a two-time former business founder and owner in the city. I listen to those concerns, and they're real. They want reliable trash and recycling pickup, and they want good roads. You know, people want, I care very much about my kids being able to bike safely to school and being able to walk on the sidewalk with a continuous sidewalk route to their schools and back. And the third thing that I hear a lot about is safe transportation. There is concerns around how roads are being prioritized, not only for upgrades and maintenance, but concerns around the bike lane paths through town, the inconsistency of them, the fact that they aren't protected bike lanes. And people want to understand what those changes are, what they mean, and the timing for those. One of the skills that I know that I can bring to council that would be valuable for the whole city is my budget experience, my management experience as it relates to teams and working with and in teams, but also just a pragmatic approach to understanding that we do need to find funding for our most pressing issues and make sure that the issues that the citizens are telling us about as their most important, which are these top three, are prioritized in a way that reflects our values.
Thank you very much. Now, we're back to you, Ms. Cornell, for the answer to this question. The Ann Arbor Area Transit Authority has a millage proposal on the August 2 ballot to expand public transportation, resulting in a 1.680 in net new mills. MLive reported recently that ridership was 27% of pre-pandemic levels and also reported that members of the Ypsilanti community have expressed concern regarding this proposal and its cost to residents. Do you support or oppose the millage, and why?
I support the Ride Millage. I absolutely do. This, to me, is a social justice issue as much as it is an environmental issue. If we don't create opportunities for people to get around town without a car, then we are leaving those who are most impacted by issues, you know, their family's pocketbooks. They are most disproportionately affected by this. I know the company that I work for has two different restaurants in town. I work with a lot of service industry workers who have to make really hard choices around their family finances regarding gas, vehicle maintenance, childcare related to having to pay a babysitter while they're commuting back and forth to work, parking once they get into town. So I'm hugely supportive of connecting the eastern part of the county to downtown Ann Arbor, creating reliable transportation to Ann Arbor from there and being able to expand our current services. I think that a complaint that I hear about the bus is that it's not reliable. Additional funding will help that. The service lines, you know, having to change buses multiple times takes up more time than it would just to drive. We need to do everything that we can to make it easy for the bus to operate and to serve as many people as possible. If we can get cars off the road and get people riding the bus, I think that that's a great thing for the environment. That reduces our carbon footprint significantly. And to me, you know, that is one of the most pressing issues. I understand that folks feel as though that that's not a local issue all the time, and what can local government do? This is something local government can do to help. The millage itself is, people are already paying for bus service as part of their taxes. This is a modest increase over what they're currently paying, and the impact and potential impact of it is really significant to advance our shared social equity goals and our environmental goals as well.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ramlaoui.
Thank you. Well, I support, you know, increasing our transit options at all levels whenever possible. The fact is that as a city council, we don't have any control over what the AAATA does and how it operates its system. It's an independent authority that collects money from multi-jurisdictions and runs it for over 50 years that way. You know, we already pay two mills through our city charter for the AAATA bus service. We're asking for doubling that, over-doubling that if you take into account everything that goes into this mill, millage increase. So I will support whatever the voters support. It's up to the voters, but we're facing an affordability crisis here in Ann Arbor and in this area. And, you know, this is another millage on top of already what is a lot for many folks. And will it deliver the promises it intends to deliver? For it to deliver on its full promise, this renewal will need to be approved four more times. We don't get to the end of this program that they've laid out for 25 years. A20, we're supposed to get to carbon neutrality in eight years. I don't think this plan does enough, soon enough, is innovative enough for us to harness and adopt it to get to our city-adopted goals. And so there is a disconnect right now of a couple decades.
Thank you. Now, we're back to you for this next question. You've both talked a bit about the environment. Can you tell us what your position on the city's environmental initiatives, such as the Climate Action Plan, known as A20, and the Sustainable Electric Utilities, might be? What can the city do to achieve the goal of reducing miles traveled by 50% by the year 2030?
Well, it's an ambitious goal, one that we adopted a little over two years ago. We need to look at federal and state funding. We need to look at other options. We're not going to be able to do this on our own. The transportation component of A20 is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. If we were going to get to that point of reducing miles traveled by 50%, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars of investment that is needed. I believe the community organizations here in Ann Arbor are rich in expertise, in intellectual property. There's, we have a world-class university in our backyard. We have many people in our community that have a lot to offer and continue to offer pretty much every council meeting. They come to the meetings with information and data and urge us to look into this further and so that we're consistent in our application and we understand the science behind all these policies. You know, so, you know, right now we're being asked to look into municipal power, and that's being led by, you know, many people in the Fifth Ward, actually. We're looking at the feasibility study and rate, what the rates will be and whether we can acquire the assets of DTE. But I believe, you know, the power is with the people. The people are demanding this. It is no longer up for elected officials to decide whether they want to do this or not. Climate change is real. It's an existential crisis. There's no more time. There's no more time to kick the can down the road. We need to listen to our constituents, and we need to be honest. We need to be honest with them because time's running out, and every day that we waste is a day that we cannot afford.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Cornell?
I'm really proud of the work that I've done in advancing our carbon neutrality goals through over a decade of service to the Ecology Center here in Ann Arbor. I have been a collaborator for A20 and the work that Dr. Saltz and her office is doing in the city since its inception. This is an area where I'm incredibly passionate about using a voice at the council table to advance our carbon neutrality goals and make our environment more friendly to everyone. To me, this very plainly is an issue of housing. You know, 80,000 cars coming into Ann Arbor just for people to work is a significant number. That's a significant amount of carbon being emitted into the atmosphere. Those are people who would welcome the opportunity to live here if they could afford it and if we had housing available to them. So I, and I know based on talking to employers, I have a background in economic development, worked with a lot of startups and existing businesses in town to understand their needs, and here heard repeatedly that, you know, I can't, I'm scared to relocate there because could my employees afford to live in Ann Arbor? We don't have the stock that we need. The nation as a whole is 20 years behind on housing. There are a lot of factors that play into that, but certainly that problem is manifested, you know, in our community in ways that impact affordability and environmental justice. We absolutely need to increase our workforce housing and our affordable housing in Ann Arbor to make it possible for people to get off the road if they choose by living close to work. And even if they choose to not commute by bike or walk, at least their commute would be reduced if they lived instead of, you know, 25 miles away, if they could live in our city and be our neighbors, and I welcome that.
Thank you very much. And we'll begin the next question with you again. Can you tell us your position on making Ann Arbor elections nonpartisan and moving to ranked choice voting if it's permitted by the state?
I think that ranked choice voting, if it's permitted by the state, is a great opportunity for more people to feel as though their voices are heard in the democratic process, and that's really important to me. So absolutely, I would appreciate that. In Ann Arbor, in terms of nonpartisan elections, I believe people should understand that at a basic party level, where do people's values lie? I think that's an important way for people to evaluate candidates and determine whether or not they want to learn more. So I am in favor of partisan elections at the city level and across the democratic process as well. I think that there are values that we share, and it's a good way for voters to understand at the very basic level, is this person aligned with what I believe is the most important action that they need to take and then drill down into their platform at whatever level it is to understand what the nuances are? Because there certainly are nuances between all different people, but certainly within a specific party alignment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ramlaoui?
I supported ranked choice voting when it came to council for us to adopt once the city allows us to do so. I do have reservations, though, when it comes to that. Running local elections now has become big business financially. Now council races are costing upwards of $40,000, and these are, you know, partisan elections. And you effectively only are running one race right now because the race in November here doesn't really matter. But for someone, if we had ranked choice voting, effectively you'd have to run two campaigns, and that's going to need, you're going to need more money. You're going to have to run for six months in order to obtain a council seat. I think that's going to make it a big disadvantage for many folks who don't have lots of resources and money. I have tried to pass a resolution at the table for nonpartisan elections. I feel that that choice should be given to the voters. We have not asked that voter, we have not asked that question of the voters in quite some time, where Ann Arbor is only one of three cities that has this. And I don't think it really informs the voters all that much, even longer. I think many people hide behind labels in order to get where they need to be, and it doesn't inform the voters a whole lot at the local level. We don't, we don't make decisions on gun laws. We don't make decisions on a woman's right to choose. Those are not, those are not the issues that council members deal with. We deal with, you know, flooding. We deal with traffic. We deal with noise. We do with a lot of other issues that you don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll begin again with you, Mr. Ramlaoui. MLive reports that the city of Ann Arbor's population increased 8.7% from 2010 to 2020. Do you predict this level of population growth will continue in the current decade? And is such growth desirable? And this is our last question.
Yeah, that is great that the city grew by that percent. I don't think it's an astronomical figure. We didn't grow by 30 or 40 or 50% as some communities out west that have no water grew at. I think we can attribute a lot of this increase to the enrollment at the University of Michigan and the jobs at the University of Michigan, as well as diversifying our local economy to include more high-tech. So, you know, it's expected. I think it's a healthy number. I don't think it's anything that is unmanageable. It's a, it's a number that we've experienced many times in the past. We've had higher rates of growth after the Second World War. I think right now we're under a lot of increasing pressure due to the climate change migration. We have a lot of people coming to Ann Arbor from the coasts and from other areas of the country that have become even less affordable than Ann Arbor. So I think it's going to continue, and I think we need to prepare ourselves for it. I think we need to invest in the infrastructure in order to support it. And I think we need to balance the quality of life for folks that are currently here with welcoming new residents to our city. I think it can be done. We are not the most densest place on Earth by far. There's plenty of areas to grow in here. But I don't know what the future holds. We saw with COVID that the work-life balance and where people work has changed now. So going forward, how does the society adapt and live post-COVID where you don't have to go into the office like you did before? Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Cornell?
So I know that I've touched on housing a few times. Certainly, population growth is, for me, a good thing. Those are more neighbors. It's more diversity. It's more inclusion for our city. But it's also more people paying taxes and the city for us to be able to accomplish more of our goals quicker. So earlier, we talked about the importance of prioritizing infrastructure, you know, road repairs, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk extensions, bike lanes, making sure that people have safe ways to commute in and within the city. Absolutely, when we increase our tax base, we have more funding available for those projects. I also believe, as I said earlier, people being able to live in Ann Arbor and for us to have adequate housing for the workforce that is in Ann Arbor is an environmental issue. I believe that there are plenty of people who would choose to live in Ann Arbor if given the opportunity. And one of the things that I would, I am going to advocate for is when we review the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is coming up, that, you know, there's already proposal funded for that. I would love to invite people who are not in our city right now to participate in that and to offer their feedback as to whether or not, you know, what's a reasonable commute for them? What would they like to see in our city center? And to really help us be the inclusive city that we need to be. I think that our work dynamic absolutely has changed, but there are a lot of people who are graduating from the university every single year who might want to start a business here. We have a ton of resources, especially in the tech sector, to support growing businesses, sports startups, help them accelerate their success. Those ideas and the technology that's being developed and researched at the university could be commercialized right here in Ann Arbor if we had a workforce that could be local, remain local, and be part of our community long term. So again, this is about housing for me, and it's addressing an issue that we've been staring at for the last 20 years, and we need to correct.
Thank you very much. And now it's time for your closing statements. You have 90 seconds, up to 90 seconds, to do a close, and Ms. Cornell will start with you.
Yes, thank you again. I appreciate the League of Women Voters putting on this event this evening, and I appreciate Mr. Ramlaoui for participating with me. I think it's really important for voters. I absolutely support your mission. I think the more educated voters are, the more likely they are to see the differences between candidates and find the best one to represent them at the council table. As I mentioned earlier, I am proud to be raising my family here in Ann Arbor. I founded and owned two businesses here and have been part of the community for over 25 years, but have only been able to afford to live here for the last six. I'm, I want to bring some of that perspective, raising a family, you know, making tough choices around where we live in order for my kids to grow up in a neighborhood that I would like for them to experience and in a good school district. I'd like to bring that and to help families overcome those challenges in the areas where a council can have big impact, infrastructure, absolutely, housing, and making sure that as we look at every priority that comes to council that we do so with an environmental equity and a social justice lens. I think that if we can be compassionate and listen and advocate for the citizens in our ward, then government will just work so much more efficiently for everyone, and that's my priority, using my communication skills, using my experience with the Ecology Center, A20, Main Street Area Association, to advance our government and to advance our city to be the equitable and inclusive place that I know that we all share as a value.
Thank you very much. And thank you to both of you for participating this evening. This has been a valuable session. Jill Cohen will add our closing comments.
Mr. Ramlaoui needs to give his closing statement.
I'm sorry. You're right.
Okay. I want to thank League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum and to my opponent for participating as we presented our viewpoints on critical issues facing the Fifth Ward. We all remain passionate about our vision for the future of Ann Arbor with our shared values and goals. In order to move forward, we need to listen to our community members and validate them on issues, no matter where they stand on them. We must step away from the name, from the name-calling, the labels like NIMBY and YIMBY that do not advance our community's dialogue. There are more ways for us to achieve our vision and goals. Collectively, we must find a way to compromise that is inclusive and equitable. When I was first elected, I promised to serve with integrity and a desire to compromise in order to find solutions to our city's needs. During council deliberations, I have had the courage to ask the difficult questions, to firmly debate the merits of issues, and not succumb to peer pressure or group think. I'm committed to doing the job that the voters first trusted me to do in 2018, and I will continue to represent the Fifth Ward with honesty, integrity, and openness. For more about my campaign, please visit votali.org, and thank you again.
Thank you, and I apologize for almost making you not give your closing remarks. Now, we can return to Jill Cohen, who will provide the closing comments.
The League thanks the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and we also thank those who contributed questions. All of our candidate forums are available for streaming from our website, lvwwashington.org. The forums can also be viewed on Ann Arbor Cable Television News. Please encourage others to watch these forums and share the links with them. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vote411.org, the League's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and current ballot proposals. As a reminder, all voters are now eligible to cast an absentee ballot, and Michigan law provides for election day registration. Whether by absentee ballot or in-person, please vote in the August 2 primary election. Thank you and good evening.